Very good. Thank you so much for coming. If you could all please rise, we'll salute our flag.
To the flag. United States of America. To the Republic, which stands by God. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña, present. Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Engler.
Here. Very good. We do have one item that's going to be continued. I believe we had a closed session for later on this evening. It has been pulled at the request of the city attorney. So at this time, we do have a special presentation. So I would like to call down to the diocese down here. District Attorney Eric Nasarenko. And our own former council member, Assembly Member Jackie Irwin.
This is exactly the time of time we called down. Sorry, everybody.
And you didn't, so you're off to a good start so far. So it is really great to be back in the chamber. And I am particularly pleased to join you tonight to recognize a public servant who has gone above and beyond in her service to Ventura County residents. She's not only getting two recognitions from the state, but she's going to be getting a recognition from the city also. Senior Deputy District Attorney Karen Wald has been named the 2021 Wildlife Prosecutor of the Year by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and by the California Department of Fish and Game. Karen is currently assigned to the Consumer and Environmental Protection Unit of the Ventura County District Attorney's Office, where she is responsible for protecting the public and our environment from harm. She has been a valuable partner and trusted resource for wildlife officers by leading the effort to hold poaching and pollution violators accountable. Over the last seven years, Karen has been involved in the prosecution of violators for a variety of crimes. In 2016, Karen successfully prosecuted a civil case involving an oil spill in Ventura County's Hall Canyon. The prosecution resulted in a settlement of nearly $1.6 million in penalties, costs, and natural resource damage restitution. In July of 2019, Karen successfully prosecuted an individual who wantonly killed a mountain lion that was collared and being monitored and studied by wildlife officials. This conviction resulted in jail time, probation, and significant community service. Karen's most recent notable prosecution involved a commercial squid fishing vessel that illegally dumped its excess tank water, known as stick water. This water creates an oxygen-deficient environment and increased amounts of lethal ammonia, both of which are harmful to aquatic life. While most of us think of criminals prosecuted for the more visible crimes involving human victims, Karen's work is equally important as she protects our fragile environment and defenseless wildlife. Please join me in recognizing Senior Deputy District Attorney and fellow Thousand Oaks resident Karen Wald.
(applause) And should we take a picture later after?
Around this way.
Thank you.
My turn. Karen, thank you for being here and thank you for everything you've done for our city so far. And thanks to Jackie for those kind words. On behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks, I'd like to present another certificate to you in recognition for being named Environmental Prosecutor of the Year, as well as your work here in Thousand Oaks way back in 2019. As a Senior Deputy District Attorney, and on behalf of the District Attorney, you took a major civil action on behalf of the city for a substandard apartment with living conditions that were substandard in an apartment building. The conditions in this building included unsafe building codes, insect infestation, as well as unfair treatment of the residents. This case was successfully completed, resulting in a correction of the violation and a payment of significant fines. Your effort in conjunction with the city staff resulted in better living conditions for the hundreds of occupants of the building, many of which are of lower-income status. The City of Thousand Oaks thanks you for your tremendous work that protects people, the environment, and wildlife here in Ventura County and the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I would like to invite our District Attorney Eric Nasarenko to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and good evening to the Thousand Oaks City Council, City Manager Powers. You have in front of you a rock star. This is a senior prosecutor who defends our environment. We are blessed in Ventura County to have outstanding natural resources, waterways, open spaces, wildlife, but it doesn't happen by accident. Somebody has to take up the cause of environmental action, prosecute those who pollute and harm our wildlife and our environment, and that is Senior Deputy District Attorney Karen Wald. I am grateful to have her in our office. She's also part of a little bit of a dream team. Her husband, Tony Wald, is also a Senior Deputy District Attorney. He is in charge of our Public Integrity Unit. And also, we are fortunate to have Karen's parents here as well. And I want to extend, on behalf of the Office of the District Attorney, our appreciation for your recognition of this outstanding prosecutor. Thank you.
Thank you. So council members, Assemblywoman Irwin, I just want to thank all of you. I live in Thousand Oaks. I've lived here since January of 2004. I have three children. My children all went through the school system in Thousand Oaks. My husband and I never want to move from here. I thank you because it's the wonderful decision-making that has taken place by council that has taken care of our beautiful city. And you protect the environment. And not very many people are willing to step up and say that the environment is important. I really appreciate it. I wish all of you well. And Assemblywoman Irwin, same for you. You have done amazing things for our county. And you continue to do amazing things. And I really appreciate that. And you too protect the environment. You protect the public. And thank you, everybody. Tracy Noonan, there you are. I worked with Tracy on the Slumlord case. And you are very kind and generous by not using the word "slumlord", but I can. And I love all of you. So thank you. Thank you very much.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down. We'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
Oh, dear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down. We'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
Oh, dear.
Thank you.
And now I would like to invite our District Attorney Eric Nasarenko to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and good evening to the Thousand Oaks City Council, City Manager Powers. You have in front of you a rock star. This is a senior prosecutor who defends our environment. We are blessed in Ventura County to have outstanding natural resources, waterways, open spaces, wildlife, but it doesn't happen by accident. Somebody has to take up the cause of environmental action, prosecute those who pollute and harm our wildlife and our environment, and that is Senior Deputy District Attorney Karen Wald. I am grateful to have her in our office. She's also part of a little bit of a dream team. Her husband, Tony Wald, is also a Senior Deputy District Attorney. He is in charge of our Public Integrity Unit. And also, we are fortunate to have Karen's parents here as well. And I want to extend, on behalf of the Office of the District Attorney, our appreciation for your recognition of this outstanding prosecutor. Thank you.
Thank you. So council members, Assemblywoman Irwin, I just want to thank all of you. I live in Thousand Oaks. I've lived here since January of 2004. I have three children. My children all went through the school system in Thousand Oaks. My husband and I never want to move from here. I thank you because it's the wonderful decision-making that has taken place by council that has taken care of our beautiful city. And you protect the environment. And not very many people are willing to step up and say that the environment is important. I really appreciate it. I wish all of you well. And Assemblywoman Irwin, same for you. You have done amazing things for our county. And you continue to do amazing things. And I really appreciate that. And you too protect the environment. You protect the public. And thank you, everybody. Tracy Noonan, there you are. I worked with Tracy on the Slumlord case. And you are very kind and generous by not using the word "slumlord", but I can. And I love all of you. So thank you. Thank you very much.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down. We'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
Oh, dear.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
(inaudible).
Okay, it's time for our public comments. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to read our assignment.
This is the time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Seven individuals have requested to speak. And pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Yes, it looks like we do have seven people in house, which is great. First up is Peggy Jo Smith, followed by George Rosenthal.
Good evening, council members.
Over the last seven years, Karen has been involved in the prosecution of violators for a variety of crimes. In 2016, Karen successfully prosecuted a civil case involving an oil spill in Ventura County's Hall Canyon. The prosecution resulted in a settlement of nearly $1.6 million in penalties, costs, and natural resource damage restitution. In July of 2019, Karen successfully prosecuted an individual who wantonly killed a mountain lion that was collared and being monitored and studied by wildlife officials. This conviction resulted in jail time, probation, and significant community service. Karen's most recent notable prosecution involved a commercial squid fishing vessel that illegally dumped its excess tank water, known as stick water. This water creates an oxygen-deficient environment and increased amounts of lethal ammonia, both of which are harmful to aquatic life. While most of us think of criminals prosecuted for the more visible crimes involving human victims, Karen's work is equally important as she protects our fragile environment and defenseless wildlife. Please join me in recognizing Senior Deputy District Attorney and fellow Thousand Oaks resident, Karen Wald.
(applause) And we hope so. Thank you.
And should we take a picture later after?
Around this way.
Oh. Right. That's amazing. Thank you.
My turn. Karen, thank you for being here and thank you for everything you've done for our city so far. And thanks to Jackie for those kind words. On behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks, I'd like to present another certificate to you in recognition for being named Environmental Prosecutor of the Year, as well as your work here in Thousand Oaks way back in 2019. As a Senior Deputy District Attorney, and on behalf of the District Attorney, you took a major civil action on behalf of the city for a substandard apartment with living conditions that were substandard in an apartment building. The conditions in this building included unsafe building codes, insect infestation, as well as unfair treatment of the residents. This case was successfully completed, resulting in a correction of the violation and a payment of significant fines. Your effort in conjunction with the city staff resulted in better living conditions for the hundreds of occupants of the building, many of which are of lower-income status. The City of Thousand Oaks thanks you for your tremendous work that protects people, the environment, and wildlife here in Ventura County and the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Thank you.
And now I would like to invite our District Attorney, Eric Nasarenko, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and good evening to the Thousand Oaks City Council, City Manager Powers. You have in front of you a rock star. This is a senior prosecutor who defends our environment. We are blessed in Ventura County to have outstanding natural resources, waterways, open spaces, wildlife, but it doesn't happen by accident. Somebody has to take up the cause of environmental action, prosecute those who pollute and harm our wildlife and our environment, and that is Senior Deputy District Attorney Karen Wald. I am grateful to have her in our office. She's also part of a little bit of a dream team. Her husband, Tony Wald, is also a Senior Deputy District Attorney. He is in charge of our Public Integrity Unit. And also, we are fortunate to have Karen's parents here as well. And I want to extend, on behalf of the Office of the District Attorney, our appreciation for your recognition of this outstanding prosecutor. Thank you.
Thank you. So, council members, Assemblywoman Irwin, I just want to thank all of you. I live in Thousand Oaks. I've lived here since January of 2004. I have three children. My children all went through the school system in Thousand Oaks. My husband and I never want to move from here. I thank you because it's the wonderful decision-making that has taken place by council that has taken care of our beautiful city. And you protect the environment, and not very many people are willing to step up and say that the environment is important. I really appreciate it. I wish all of you well. And Assemblywoman Irwin, same for you. You have done amazing things for our county, and you continue to do amazing things, and I really appreciate that. And you too protect the environment, you protect the public, and thank you, everybody. Tracy Noonan, there you are. I worked with Tracy on the Slumlord case, and you are very kind and generous by not using the word "slumlord," but I can. And I love all of you, so thank you. Thank you very much.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
Oh, dear.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
(inaudible).
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
(laughing) Dear.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
(laughing) Dear.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
(laughing) Dear.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
(laughing) Dear.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
(laughing) Dear.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
(laughing) Dear.
Thank you.
Okay. Eric's up next. And now I would like to invite our District Attorney, Eric Nasarenko, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and good evening to the Thousand Oaks City Council, City Manager Powers. You have in front of you a rock star. This is a senior prosecutor who defends our environment. We are blessed in Ventura County to have outstanding natural resources, waterways, open spaces, wildlife, but it doesn't happen by accident. Somebody has to take up the cause of environmental action, prosecute those who pollute and harm our wildlife and our environment, and that is Senior Deputy District Attorney Karen Wald. I am grateful to have her in our office. She's also part of a little bit of a dream team. Her husband, Tony Wald, is also a Senior Deputy District Attorney. He is in charge of our Public Integrity Unit. And also, we are fortunate to have Karen's parents here as well. And I want to extend, on behalf of the Office of the District Attorney, our appreciation for your recognition of this outstanding prosecutor. Thank you.
Thank you. So, council members, Assemblywoman Irwin, I just want to thank all of you. I live in Thousand Oaks. I've lived here since January of 2004. I have three children. My children all went through the school system in Thousand Oaks. My husband and I never want to move from here. I thank you because it's the wonderful decision-making that has taken place by council that has taken care of our beautiful city. And you protect the environment, and not very many people are willing to step up and say that the environment is important. I really appreciate it. I wish all of you well. And Assemblywoman Irwin, same for you. You have done amazing things for our county, and you continue to do amazing things, and I really appreciate that. And you too protect the environment, you protect the public, and thank you, everybody. Tracy Noonan, there you are. I worked with Tracy on the Slumlord case, and you are very kind and generous by not using the word "slumlord," but I can. And I love all of you, so thank you. Thank you very much.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
(laughing) Dear.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody who came tonight. Appreciate you being here. Let's step forward, invite the council down, and we'll get a few pictures.
She lives in Thousand Oaks, doesn't she?
Yes.
I could recommend someone for you to vote for her.
(laughing) Dear.
(inaudible).
Okay, it's time for our public comments. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to read our assignment.
This is the time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Seven individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Yes, it looks like we do have seven people in house, which is great. First up is Peggy Jo Smith, followed by George Rosenthal.
Good evening, council members. My name is Peggy Jo Smith. I live in Newberry Park, California. I've ever been a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1968. First, I want to commend all of you for your efforts with Project Room Key in order to house our already homeless in our city. But what perplexes me is how you were able to find federal funds to accomplish this program for the homeless, but can't seem to help the senior citizens. I realize you have previously asked the mobile home park property owners if they would consider lowering their percentage rate with no resolution. And then you received a notice from their attorneys, and you retreated. Enough about what has happened. Thank you. Let's find a solution. I do believe there are things the city council can do to assist our seniors, like utilizing the Community Development Block Grant. The CDBG is a grant you already have in your existing budget. In addition, you could investigate the Ventura County's low-grant, low-rent grant program and research the federal tenant-based rental assistance program. I'm sure there are many more assistance programs that you could find as well. Obtaining these funds would offset the percentage difference in order to aid our senior residents by lowering the 8.5% increase down to at least a 4.4% increase. I suggest that you, the city council, task your city manager and assistant city manager to do their job in order to find the funds needed, then report back to us at the next month's meeting with the findings by adding thus the topic on the November agenda. I want to be very clear. Thompson Allen Corporation, LLC, and its board do seem not to care about their many elderly tenants who will become homeless due to their huge 8.5% interest increase to their rent. These senior residents are on fixed incomes, have health conditions. These people will not be able to pay their rent and ultimately be out on the streets of Thousand Oaks. This will overwhelm our fire department, EMTs, and hospitals. Thus, the city will then need to build additional homeless housing. This is a dire situation we are facing as senior citizens of Thousand Oaks who live in 55 and older mobile home parks. What I have proposed here tonight is doable and would be a win-win-win for everyone. The property owners will get their full amount, the residents will pay less and stay in their mobile homes, and the City of Thousand Oaks and this council will have shown that they have some heart and concern for our senior citizens of this great city. So please, please stop telling us what we can't do and tell us what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Peggy Buckles.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. My name is George Rosenthal. I live in Ventura Estates. The council and mayor did not listen to anything anyone stated at three council meetings. They took nothing to heart and offered only callous non-promises and excuses. They personally did zero research on any of the facts offered by any of the speakers. They offered no true workable options to solve the council's problems with their ordinance. They only listened to staff members and attorneys who said the same tired mantra. We have to ask the park owners to lower the rent to raise 5%. They said no. Why didn't the council task the staff and attorneys to come up with concrete ideas and solve the problem of the ordinance it's causing? We found a number of ways this issue can be solved, as per the talk from Peggy Smith. Why are senior homeowners researching and looking for answers the city should have known in the first place? Councilman Adams stated that there is a list of agencies and groups who would subsidize and pay rent. This is the list. I asked the mayor, the council, and staff in writing for a list of every available agency and group for rent assistance. Only Finance Director Bascarino sent the resource page. The resources are limited and only a Band-Aid. One area, the pamphlet, says rent. None of the agencies in the pamphlet have any assistance for rent. None of the agencies give rent. In fact, Claire at Lutheran Social Services stated, "That's not true. There is no group that has any rent assistance." The agencies listed mainly offer help for the homeless: showers, quarters for laundry, one meal a week, outreach programs. There are food banks, but they give a limited amount of food with very few choices. Another ridiculous concept brought forward by a speaker last council meeting was how seniors can get a reverse mortgage to get money to pay for additional rent, and no one should worry. The problem is, he was wrong, and Councilman Adams and McNamee fell for it without knowing the true facts. To get a reverse mortgage, your manufactured home, not mobile home, must be classified and taxed as real estate on your own property, not residing in a mobile home park. There are no property taxes in a mobile home park. They do not own the property. They pay rent on the ground. The Thousand Oaks Mobile Ordinance 525 states, "It is your duty to protect mobile home park residents from excessive rent." Any land increase is a permanent increase in rent. It doesn't go away. Work with the park owners through the CDBG funds or other methods that Ms. Smith brought up. You must go back, have the decency to work with the park owners. By your inaction, you're failing seniors, and we want to be on the agenda in the next two weeks to discuss what could be done.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, try to address the council as a whole. I understand that there are some people who would like to address each one of us, but try to address this council as a whole. Thank you. Ms. Buckles, followed by Madhu Hebdar.
Good evening. I'm speaking as president of the Thousand Oaks branch of the American Association of University Women. I want to call attention to a horrible racist incident recently occurring in a local fast-food restaurant. This is how it was described by our member, Thousand Oaks High School teacher Sandra Martinez. "When you're standing in line waiting for your order, and suddenly a teenager says, 'Here, on the wall, there should be a sign that says, 'No Mexicans Allowed.'" I turned around and stared at the adult with him, who then did speak to the teen. "I've lived and worked for 29 years here in Thousand Oaks, and I'm still not accepted." Let me repeat her comment. "I've lived and worked for 29 years here in Thousand Oaks, and I'm still not accepted." A little about the lovely woman who fell victim to this teen's slur. Ms. Martinez is a highly respected professional educator, having successfully taught for 23 years in the World Languages Department at both Newberry and Thousand Oaks High Schools. Even though she now lives in an adjoining city, she commits many hours of service to our community by being a regular volunteer with Adelante Comunidad Conejo. In addition, Ms. Martinez sponsors two service clubs at Thousand Oaks High School, which help many students perform to their highest abilities. In 2020, Ms. Martinez received both the Teacher of the Month and Teacher of the Year awards. AAUW is very concerned about these types of racist comments repeatedly occurring in our community. We believe this type of behavior too often finds a safe haven in our area, as there have not been enough visible, concrete actions taken by our city leaders, businesses, and other public officials calling for a reduction in hate speech. There must be a widely-supported, community-wide effort calling upon all agencies, businesses, and organizations to stop macro/microaggressions like this. The city council and org... The city council needs to be the change agent to lead the way for preventing this type of racism. Please be the leaders that we know you are to be. AAUW calls upon this council to make immediate action regarding the many microaggressions which unfortunately occur, and we ask you to help end hate speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckles. Next up is Mahu Hebdar.
Mahu Hebdar. Esteemed council mayor and other council members, I am a resident of Thousand Oaks for 17 years. California Assembly Concurrent Resolution AC 209 passed on August 4th, designates October as Hindu-American Awareness and Appreciation Month. October has been proclaimed by many states and cities as Hindu Heritage Awareness Month as well. Thousand Oaks is home to a good number of Hindu-Americans, most of whom work in high-tech companies. I have two requests for the esteemed council. On the occasion of Hindu-American Awareness Month, we have an exhibition in the coming Sunday's Thousand Oaks Street Fair. The exhibition, called Darshana, introduces Hindu tradition, culture, and history to everyone. This goes way beyond samosas and curries. I invite the esteemed council members and general public to visit our booth in the city fair on coming Sunday. I also request the council to include a resolution recognizing October as Hindu Awareness Month in Thousand Oaks in the next council meeting. This follows right in step with California Assembly Concurrent Resolution AC 209. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Bruce Huedelf, followed by Betty Stapleford. And she is on Zoom.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Huedelf. I've addressed the council before, and thank you for having me again. This is about the rent control. I live at Ventura Park Estates in Newberry Park. And first of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Smith right here, our lead person, who gave some, I think, some very viable options that may help the council as you deal with this issue of perhaps getting the rate lowered this year, which may not be likely, or at least in the future as you negotiate further. I did want to just clear up one thing. I spent my entire career working with seniors. I ran retirement communities, very large ones, akin to University Village here in Thousand Oaks. Never that one, but some other ones. There's been a lot of talk about people perhaps losing their homes if these rents go up. And actually, there are two other options these people have. Besides running retirement communities, I was an educator. My most frequent topic was senior housing options. And there are two options people have available. Number one is federally subsidized HUD projects. There are three that I could find here in Thousand Oaks. These are apartment buildings subsidized by the government. The rents are lower. Everything is taken care of by the management in terms of leaky faucets and water heaters that go out and so on and so forth. The grounds are kept up. The hitch is, you have to plan usually about five years in advance to get in. So I would advise people that are having issues now and are looking ahead at possible problems, put your application into these places. There are major HUD projects throughout Ventura County, Simi Valley, Moore Park, Camarillo, et cetera. There is one on Crescent Drive in Beverly Hills, two blocks north of Wilshire Boulevard. They're all over the place. Some are high-rise, some are lower. Second option is full-service retirement communities run by not-for-profit sponsors. I ran one for 20 years. They will take in... Some of them will take in low-income seniors, usually very quickly, and in their rental agreements, it says, "We will take care of you if you run out of money," and they do it. So think about that as you move forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, we do have Betty Stapleford on Zoom. Is Betty there?
Mayor, she's not on.
Very good. Then we have James Scott, also on Zoom. Mr. Scott, are you there?
Yes, good evening, council.
Thanks, sir. Go ahead.
Just as a follow-up to a previous discussion we had had, an issue that I had brought forward. I investigated San Diego's, specifically, I believe it is Encinitas' dealing with the noise that's emitted by some of the mufflers that we've got going through the town. In Ponto Beach, California, they've actually enacted a statute whereby it becomes an offense to utilize an out-of-sink muffler. Living at Jansen Moore Park Road, I've noticed that since I spoke to you approximately 60 or 90 days ago, we've had quite an escalation, and my worry is just that it would continue to escalate, and at this point, it's actually changed this environment quite a bit. So anything the council can do, and I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our final public speaker is Lynn Young. I believe she's in house. Very good, ma'am.
Okay, good evening. This is really not... Okay, this is about the mobile home rent. This is really not about the landowners increasing their rent. This is a contract, contracted agreement that is happening now. Unfortunately, the term of the current index is very high, so this is where the city should probably step in to look at the ordinance again. So the bottom... The basic question really is, is the contract trumping the ordinance, or the ordinance trumps contract? If the ordinance cannot do anything about the contract, we're just wasting our time, and I just should be home watching YouTube. But I think I should want to speak up a little bit because it just bothers me. It doesn't affect me because I might just move in here two months ago. So the ordinance... I want to read this. I'm actually confused. The ordinance one step said, "D," this is 5.2505, "D, Notice of Index." The argument right now is the index. The landowners is not doing anything wrong. They don't need to do anything. The index will increase rent for them because that's what the contract is all about. The notice of index, "After review," I quote, "after review of pertinent information from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the Community Development Director, which is the city, or the designated, shall determine the index for each year and notify each landlord by mail of his or her determination." Did we do this step? Did we actually did the city review this 8.5 and say, "Okay, we agree. 8.5 is what we agree." Or is it too low? Or is it too high? We all ask city to do something. Again, if the ordinance cannot do anything, we might as well not have ordinance because it sounds all great. Oh, yeah, Thousand Oaks have a... I'm just down here from Seattle. Yeah, Thousand Oaks Mobile Home has a rent control. How can you control something where there's no threshold if you don't put a cap? But then again, your position is really tough, because even if you do put a cap, the landowner has a right to do the adjustable rate of return application. So then, I don't know either, but I just think maybe we should do a little bit about the index. Just do something so we know you guys did something. We still need to attack the ordinance, whether we have it or we don't have it. This half-assing doesn't work at all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That was our last public speaker in public comments. Staff, do you have any referrals or any comments?
Yeah, just briefly, I saw the city does continue to be a convenia, consistent with council's goal on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I saw Alexandra South step out and catch our speaker, and so we'll be certain to follow up with him regarding some recognition there. In relation to mobile home parks, we've had a number of speakers on that topic. Obviously, it's been something the council has discussed in the previous two meetings. One speaker did mention CDBG, so I just did want to stress, and we've included this in some of our presentations, we do leverage CEBG. And in the... Over the course of the last couple of cycles, we've used CDBG funds for community projects, mobile home repairs, as capital repairs. And those have been 27 units that have received upgrades in excess of $300,000 total that's been spent on CDBG funds. Consistent with what we shared at the last meeting, we did provide a resource list that one of the speakers did mention. That was just a broad brush stroke of resources available. In those resources, there are rental assistance programs. Granted, they all have income requirements and other pieces, and those types of programs
told that this rental assistance program is no longer available.
So I think what you're referring to is the private opportunities that some parks provide. I'll let City Attorney Noonan speak to that. As I understand, those are private arrangements. Some parks have them, and so I'll let her speak to that item.
May I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and we're going to cut it off short. Again, this is not on the agenda, so just to briefly respond, any rental assistance program that a mobile home park owner would provide to the residents on there is a private contract, no different than the lease itself. So the programs that the city focused on were the government programs, the county programs, state programs, nonprofit programs, and federal programs.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Briefly, because it's not on the calendar.
We've had questioning of the CPI that was used. And are we aware of the formula? I understand there is more than one CPI. And are they using the correct one?
We use the industry-recognized CPI.
Well, I don't want to, if this is not proper to do this, there are a lot of things that we're kind of leaving hanging, and I...
Councilmember Jones, I'll be happy. We have a memo we prepared actually last year on CPI when that question had come up on a separate topic, so I'll get you a copy of that.
I'll get with you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. The public comments are closed. We do have our regular consent calendar and would welcome a motion by one of my colleagues.
Move to approve.
No discussion, very good. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill Delapena?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember McNamie absent.
Very good. Now, we do have a public hearing coming up, so Madam Clerk, if you could please open the hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A Municipal Code Amendment implementing Senate Bill Number 9, MCA 2022-70465. And speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have five minutes.
Very good. We do have a presentation tonight by Ms. Justine Kendall, as well as, we have Kelvin Parker and Mr. Duncan for questions. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you this evening is to find the municipal code amendment before you exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act and to amend the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by modifying Sections 9-4.202 and 9-4.2202 and adding Section 9-3.305 to Title IX and Chapter III, Article III, to update the city's zoning regulations to implement 2021 Senate Bill Number 9. Senate Bill Number 9, also known as the California Home Act, was part of the Senate's Building Opportunities for All Housing package created to address the severe housing shortage in California in 2021. SB 9 was signed by Governor Newsom on September 16th of that same year and went into effect on January 1st, 2022. On May 24th, 2022, City Council approved a resolution initiating this request, and on September 26th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to review the proposed ordinance. By a unanimous vote, they have recommended the City Council adopt the ordinance as proposed. At the most basic level, SB 9 allows owners of a property within a single-family residential zone to do two things. One, build two primary residential units per lot, and two, to subdivide a lot into two parcels. This is with the end goal of allowing a possible maximum of four dwelling units within the original single-family law boundaries. I'll go ahead and note here that since the law went into effect at the first of this year, and the city therefore began accepting applications in compliance with state law, there have been approximately 30 inquiries into the city's SB 9 implementation and application process, and only three attempts to submit. As of today, only one complete application has been received. To achieve the development allowed under this law, the law requires ministerial approval of the following application types. One, a one-time subdivision of an existing single-family residential parcel into two parcels, and a two-unit housing development, which is two homes on an eligible single-family residential parcel, not including permissible accessory dwelling units. In addition to laying out the type of development now allowed, the law also describes the eligibility criteria, process, and level of review allowed, and how jurisdictions may regulate SB 9 projects through objective standards, both state-mandated and potentially implemented by a local jurisdiction. And I'll go through each part of this law and everything that you see here in more detail. The development allowed is, again, a one-time subdivision of an existing single-family residential parcel into two parcels, what is being called an urban lot split, and two homes on an eligible single-family residential parcel, not including permissible accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, what we're calling a two-unit housing development. ADU and junior ADUs are allowed to be developed in conjunction with an SB 9 project but would be processed separately under applicable state and local ADU law. That development can be accomplished in a few different ways, as you can see in this graphic. Prior to the passage of SB 9, a single-family residentially-zoned property allowed for a total of three housing units: one primary dwelling unit, one ADU, and one junior accessory dwelling unit, or a JADU. Now, under current law with SB 9, in Scenario A circled here, in which a lot is not being subdivided, homeowners can use SB 9 to build two new homes on a vacant lot plus whatever ADUs and JADUs would be allowed on site. In no event, more than two, for a total of four residential units. If there is an existing home, they could add one new dwelling unit plus whatever ADUs and JADUs would be allowed on site, and in any event, no more than two, for a total of, again, four residential units. If an existing residence and an ADU or JADU already exist on site, one new dwelling unit plus only one additional ADU or JADU could be added. In Scenario B, where a lot is being subdivided, homeowners that split a lot will be allowed to build two new units on each of the two new lots, allowing for a total of, again, four units within the original property boundaries. If there are existing units on the lot, new homes can be added, also resulting in a total of four potential units. In all cases, four units is the maximum inclusive of ADUs and JADUs. These units can be detached, attached, or conversions of existing structures. To be eligible to propose either of those project types, a property must be designated as within a single-family residential zone with several key exceptions. Single-family zones are those in which residential uses are limited to one single-family dwelling per lot and no multiple-family uses or other commercial uses are allowed. These are known as the R1, RA, RO, and RE zones, as well as Hillside Plan Development and Residential Plan Development zones in which the predominant existing development is single-family residential. However, SB 9 specifically prohibits urban lot splits and two-unit projects in certain areas. These projects may not be proposed in historic areas, which is not applicable in the city, and environmentally sensitive areas, such as wetlands, conservation areas, and protected species habitat areas. Wetlands are not generally present in single-family zoned areas in the city, and there are few, if any, conservation easement areas. However, affirmative documentation that no protected habitat area will be disturbed would be required as part of the application process under the ordinance as proposed. In addition, SB 9 projects may not take place within hazardous areas such as a FEMA-designated flood zone, a hazardous waste site, an earthquake fault zone, or a very high fire hazard severity zone without complying with the additional requirements and standards normally applied by the city within those zones. Projects involving the demolition or alteration of any dwellings that are income-restricted to levels affordable to persons and families of moderate, low, or very low income that are subject to rent control imposed by the city, or that have been occupied by a rental tenant within the last three years, are prohibited. And lastly, properties which have already been split under an SB 9 urban lot split process may not be split again, and urban lot split projects may not take place on a parcel adjacent to one previously split by the owner or any person acting in concert with the owner. If a property and project are found to be eligible, applications will need to be submitted and reviewed under a process determined by state and local regulation. Certain materials will be specifically required for SB 9 projects to ensure compliance with state and local law. In addition to all necessary plans and exhibits normally required for residential development or a lot split, the application for either type of SB 9 project, an urban lot split or a two-unit housing development, will require a biologist statement confirming that there is no protected habitat on site to determine eligibility, as previously mentioned, as well as a project tree report or statement that there are no protected trees in the vicinity of the project area, a title report, and proof that the HOA has been notified of the proposed project, if applicable, and I'll describe why that is a little bit more in a minute. Recorded affidavits are required for all SB 9 projects to ensure compliance with the eligibility requirements and acknowledge that short-term rentals are not permitted. In addition, as required by SB 9, if an applicant proposes an urban lot split, the subdivider must record an affidavit stating that they intend to occupy one of the units for a minimum of three years from the date of approval. The state law is silent as to whether or not the city can require owner occupancy of SB 9 units that do not involve an urban lot split. In order to maintain consistency and to discourage absentee landlords and speculative development, the ordinance enacts this requirement for the owner of a two-unit housing development-only project as well. In order to meet that requirement, a habitable dwelling unit must exist on the property by the time the new parcel map or the development project is approved. To ensure that that resident exists at the time of the parcel map approval and to encourage projects to meet the intent of the law, which is increasing the supply of housing, the ordinance requires that an urban lot split application not be accepted except in conjunction with a concurrently submitted application for residential development on the newly-created parcel, if the property has an existing residence, or on both parcels if both resulting properties are vacant, unless a two-unit housing development project has already been approved on the subject property. The applications will be reviewed simultaneously, and approval of the new parcel map would be held until the building permit is issued. Unlike state ADU law, SB 9 does not exempt SB 9 units from any applicable city fees such as an application, map recordation, building plan check fees, or impact fees such as traffic, school, and Quimby fees. And most importantly, SB 9 specifically states that all SB 9 projects must be reviewed ministerially. Ministerially means projects must be approved without any public hearing or subjective judgment from city staff if it meets state and local law requirements. Ministerial approvals typically do not include any public noticing requirements, as there is no ability to appeal or request administrative review. However, as SB 9 does not explicitly remove an HOA's authority to prohibit this type of development, as the ADU law did, the ordinance has been drafted to state that if the site is associated with a homeowners association, an HOA, the applicant must provide proof that they have notified the HOA of the proposed project. SB 9 also specifically exempts applicable projects from secret review, and it is important to note that all SB 9 projects will still be reviewed by various city departments such as the Community Development, Public Works, and other departments to ensure compliance with applicable objective municipal code standards and technical codes such as the Building Code and the Fire Code. So if one wants to apply for one or both types of SB 9 projects and their property is eligible, they'll need to meet a variety of standards while designing the project. Jurisdictions may only apply objective zoning, subdivision, and design standards to SB 9-related projects. These standards may not involve any personal or subjective judgment and must be available to the developer prior to application. An objective standard is a regulation that does not involve, again, any judgment but relies on a quantifiable measure to determine compliance. While the state law requires compliance with both state and locally-implemented objective standards, it is similar to recent state ADU legislation in that it allows jurisdictions to apply local standards as long as they do not prevent a minimum level of development. None of the standards, which I'll review in a moment, required by state or implemented via the ordinance before you tonight, may preclude the construction of up to two units, not including ADUs, of at least 800 square feet each per property. The state requires certain standards and allows the city to implement others within certain parameters. The specific state standards included in SB 9 include what you see here on this slide. Jurisdictions may not impose residential setbacks greater than four feet for side and rear property lines. The city may specify front yard standards, however. Similar to existing ADU regulation, jurisdictions may not impose any setback requirements for a unit constructed within either the existing living area or in the same location and envelope as a structure which is demolished and reconstructed. Jurisdictions may not require more than one parking space per unit. The ordinance requires that space to be enclosed, as we'll talk about more in a minute. The law does include exceptions to this rule, however, none of those currently apply within the city boundaries. Jurisdictions may not reject an application because it proposes adjacent or connected structures, and as with existing city and state regulations for ADUs and JADUs, SB 9 prohibits rental tenancies of less than 31 days in units developed using SB 9. The following additional limitations apply to all urban lot split projects under SB 9. No parcel shall be less than 1,200 square feet, and no parcel may be smaller than 40% of the original size of the subject property. The primary uses on the resulting lots must be limited to residential uses, and, as discussed earlier, state law requires occupation of a dwelling on site from the date of approval. Jurisdictions may not require correction of an existing legal nonconforming condition as a condition for ministerial approval, and jurisdictions may not require dedications of rights of way or the construction of off-site improvements. However, they may require easements required for the provision of public services and While SB 9 requires applicants and cities to comply with those certain provisions just described, it also provides cities with some flexibility and allows cities to implement objective zoning, subdivision, and design standards. Again, so long as those do not preclude two units from being at least 800 square foot each per property. The list you see here describes areas of flexibility allowed by SB 9 where possible objective standards could be imposed by the city. The standards in the ordinance before you this evening were drafted to maintain as much consistency with the required design and development normally required for single-family residential development as possible. The city may implement other objective design standards, however, it is important to note that pursuant to the State Housing Crisis Act, local ordinances cannot impose restrictions that reduce the intensity of land use on housing sites, which includes reducing the total building envelope, the density, et cetera. And I'll now go through each of these standards and what is included in the ordinance as recommended. When a lot split occurs, the local agency must allow up to two units on each lot resulting from the lot split. And when a lot split has not occurred, the lot is eligible to build two primary units as well as one ADU and/or junior ADU per primary unit, as it ordinarily would under ADU law. In no case does SB 9 require... In no case does SB nine require a local agency to allow more than four units on a single lot in any combination of primary units, ADUs, or junior ADUs. Under the proposed ordinance, the size of a unit would be controlled by the required setbacks, required percentage of usable open space on the lot, limitations on grading and removal of protected trees, as well as property characteristics, limitations on grading, existing development, and costs. Pursuant to SB nine, if a dwelling unit on the site has been rented in the past three years, no demolition of that unit which has been rented is allowed. If there are other units which were not rented on the same site, demolition of up to 25% of the existing exterior walls of the non-rental unit is allowed. And if no dwelling unit on the site has been rented in the last three years, up to 100% of demolition of all units on site are allowed. A flag lot is a lot behind another lot with a long segment extending along one side of the front lot to connect the rear lot to the street. Since the purpose of the extension is to connect the rear lot to the street for vehicular access, the base of the pole will have a curb cut and an apron built into the public right of way. As each new curb cut removes at least one street parking space available to the neighborhood on streets that allow parking, the ordinance prohibits flag lots and instead requires an access easement over the front property's driveway instead, maintaining just one curb cut for those homes. As noted previously, SB nine does not prescribe a front yard setback requirement, and so the ordinance is drafted to say that existing front yard setbacks of the underlying zoning district, which is typically 20 feet, must continue to apply for parcels fronting a street. However, for landlocked parcels or lots that have no direct access to a street except by easement over another lot, the ordinance states that all setbacks shall be a minimum of four feet to determine which property line is the front. This is to allow clustering of the new development closer to the existing housing on the original property rather than forcing it towards neighboring lots. In addition to the required setbacks, a minimum amount of usable open space is currently required by both the city's new objective standards and residential plan development permits. To remain consistent with existing single-family residential standards, staff has recommended that at least 15% of each lot with an SB nine unit is designated as usable open space as defined in the ordinance. In almost all cases, the city's existing regulations limit the height of single-family dwellings to 25 feet unless increased side yard setbacks are provided. ADUs and J-ADUs are typically held to the same height limit as the primary dwelling unit except when detached, in which case they are limited to 16 feet. Accordingly, staff has included a 25-foot height limit or up to 35 feet with increased side and rear setbacks for SB nine units to remain consistent with the majority of existing single-family residence standards. Detached ADUs would still only be allowed to be 16 feet or in compliance with state law. The city's existing regulations require two enclosed off-street parking spaces for each single-family dwelling with four bedrooms or less, three spaces or two enclosed for those with five or six bedrooms, and three enclosed spaces for those with seven bedrooms or more. However, SB nine limits this requirement to one parking space per unit. The ordinance before you this evening requires those spaces to be enclosed unless the garage structure or structures would physically preclude the SB nine units from being at least 800 square feet in floor area per lot, in which case the required parking may be unenclosed. The city's existing regulations require design review for new single-family dwellings and additional onsite development. This is a discretionary process using subjective design guidelines with final approval typically granted either by staff or the planning commission if a project is required to be heard at a public hearing. The city may not impose the same discretionary and subjective process for SB nine projects. As currently drafted, the ordinance requires facade requirements for garage conversions to avoid flat blank walls facing the street, which can occur in some cases. Each primary dwelling unit should also include a minimum of 160 cubic feet of enclosed storage area as storage spaces are often the spaces which are converted. Additionally, staff has recommended that all SB nine units address privacy concerns by prohibiting any window or door of a dwelling unit within 10 feet of an adjoining residential property without the use of privacy glass. The city may implement other objective design standards in the future, however, it is important to note that pursuant to the State Housing Crisis Act, again, local ordinances cannot impose restrictions that reduce the intensity of land use on housing sites. The city's existing regulations require discretionary review and public hearing process for new development on hillside lots within the HPD zone. To remain consistent but maintain a ministerial process, staff recommends that the objective grading limitations currently contained within the municipal code apply to all SB nine units located on lots designated as being within the HPD zone. Similarly, projects proposed on properties that are located within the protected ridgeline overlay zone are subject to the objective standards contained within the municipal code section related to protected ridgeline overlay zone regulations. The city's existing standards also require discretionary review and public hearing for any grading or relocation of earth on land having a natural slope greater than 25%. This review and approval process is, again, discretionary and subjective and therefore cannot apply to subdivisions or the construction of new dwellings pursuant to SB nine. However, as such, the ordinance prohibits SB nine projects from grading on natural slopes greater than 25%, unless, of course, that restriction would physically preclude the development of at least two 800-square-foot primary dwelling units per property. Similarly, the city's existing regulations require approval by the planning commission for the removal of any protected oak or landmark tree with a trunk of a certain size. This review and approval process is not objective and therefore cannot apply to subdivisions or the construction of new dwelling units pursuant to SB nine. The ordinance therefore prohibits the removal of any protected tree or construction within the protected zone of the protected tree unless doing so would physically preclude the minimum level of development, in which case the protected tree may be encroached upon or removed with the onsite replacement of one 36-inch replacement tree of a live oak species. Lastly, the only manner in which the city may deny a proposed SB nine subdivision or housing development is if the city's building official makes a written finding based upon the preponderance of the evidence that the proposed project would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety or the physical environment for which there is no feasible method to mitigate or avoid the impact. A specific adverse impact is defined under state law as a significant quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact that is determined based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they exist on the date the application was deemed complete. It should be noted that this is a very high standard for municipalities to meet and is unlikely to be used often. In summary, absent an ordinance regulating SB nine projects, proposals for urban lot splits and two-unit housing developments are only subject to the minimum standards outlined in the state law. Without the implementation of local regulations specific to the type of development and subdivisions mandated by SB nine, the city is compelled to accept and approve requests to allow two single-family dwellings and/or allow subdivision of an existing property in a single-family residential zone under current applicable regulations without any local objective standards tailored to this type of development. The proposed municipal code amendment is consistent with the goal and policy of the general plan shown to you here because the city is using an appropriate tool of objective design standards and regulations to help ensure residential development allowed by SB nine meets fundamental design principles and expectations for the city. By adopting this municipal code amendment to implement SB nine, the city is ensuring that local control is achieved to the best of the city's ability by allowing the city to regulate these projects where allowed to by the state law. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as are several of our staff members.
Just before I get through there, I believe that was Justine's first presentation in front of the council, relatively still a new member of our team. Just wanted to say much I appreciated. That's a tough one to do. It's a lot of dense material, and she's worked very hard along with Noel on this item. So I appreciate the thorough presentation, being her first.
Thank you to the team for such an in-depth presentation on a sweeping change to our zoning. So thank you for that. I'm sure we do have some questions from our council colleagues. Anybody have any questions of staff? Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. My question is, we have, does SB nine calls for the requirement that residents be living there for three years?
For urban lot split applications, yes. That's what the state law requires.
So how do we enforce that? How can we check on this?
So our ordinance requires that any project that's applicable to SB nine record a covenant on the property stating that the property owner will live in one of the units on one of the lots for a period of three years. If they fail to do that, then the city could enforce both the covenant and the city's municipal code.
I didn't hear the end.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you. Can you speak into the microphone?
Move a little closer to the mic. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. So if the property is required to have a covenant recorded against it, that indicates that the owner will live on the property for up to three years, at least three years. And if they fail to do so, then the city can enforce that covenant, or it would also be a violation of the municipal code.
And what would be the consequences?
So ultimately, the city would ask the court for some injunctive relief requiring that they, you know, that that be followed.
And what would that look like?
Well, it would require a civil action to be filed by the city.
What are the penalties for that? If somebody is convicted, then is there a monetary penalty? What does that entail?
Yeah, so the city could seek either monetary penalties, you know, or look for, you know, injunctive relief requiring that the property owner comply with the deed restriction. And then that would be a violation of a court order if they were not doing that.
How many applications do we have so far that would fall under this category or in this?
We've not received any applications so far that include an urban lot split. We've received only one application at all.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
No, excuse me. What is the Ellis Act?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
What is the Ellis Act?
Ellis, he's asking about the Ellis Act on rentals.
Yeah, so that's a law that deals with removing rental units from the housing stock.
It's a law that does what?
That relates to removing rental properties from the city's housing stock.
How does it apply to SB nine? Or how does it apply to our reaction of what we're proposing tonight to SB nine?
So SB nine prohibits certain projects where certain things are applicable, and one of those is on a property that was subject to the Ellis Act.
It was subject to what?
The Ellis Act.
And what is the Ellis Act?
So that's a law that relates to what you can and can't do with regard to removing rental properties from the rental market.
And what exactly does it do in that regard? I'm being attacked by a gnat there. What does the Ellis Act do? There are references to the Ellis Act in the written material.
That is correct. So that was enacted in state law in 1986. It's existing, it's on the books. It's referenced here in this instance in order to prevent demolition of the units. It lays, it sets forth certain requirements that relates to what landlords can and cannot do to tenants. It also covers things such as eviction from deed-restricted, affordable units.
Well, does it relate to what is being proposed in the nature of changes here tonight?
Maybe I can help briefly. One of the slides that they covered in there, if you were going to do an SB nine project, you may be choosing to demo the existing property. Simply, what they're referring to, the Ellis Act here, is if that will not be, if a property is under that or governed under that, if that would remove it from the housing stock, you will not be able to demo it. It's an oversimplified version, but it just deals with the fact that you can't be taking product out of the...
You can't displace tenants for this type of a project. That's what that means. That's all that it means.
In other words, if you have an existing house on a single-family lot, you can't displace the tenants, demolish the house, and then create two lots and then put two units on each lot.
Correct.
So if you had tenants in a house, then you could not do access SB nine. Is that right?
You couldn't demolish the building. Like, for example, the application that's pending right now is a not demolition of the building.
Oh, there is one action pending, then?
It's not a lot split. It's an SB nine project. Remember, there's various ways of adding more units to property. There's SB nine, there's a lot split, there's ADUs, and there's junior ADUs. There's various pieces of legislation that allows more than one unit to go on a lot. So in this case, and Justine, I think you can explain a little bit more better than I can since you're processing it.
Is that pursuant to SB nine? Or was that the case before SB nine?
No, it's an SB nine application.
We're talking about the project currently submitted is to convert an existing structure into two units. The outside of the structure will look the same other than having one new front door.
Right, but it will not involve a lot split. An SB nine project can involve a lot split, but not all SB nine projects will include a lot split.
But adding another unit was possible before SB nine. Is that what you're saying?
Adding an ADU or a junior ADU were permitted prior to SB nine.
And what is the maximum size of that, or do we know?
The maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit. For a junior accessory dwelling unit, it's 500 square feet. For a detached unit, it is, I believe, 1,000 square feet. For, if you have two bedrooms, or 850 square feet if you have one bedroom. And for an attached unit, an attached accessory dwelling unit, if you put the ADU in like an addition, it's up to 50% of the existing residence.
Okay, if one were going to try to utilize SB nine to the maximum, that is, get a lot split and then put two units on each lot. One would not have to have an enclosed garage if he were within a half a mile of a bus route? Is that it?
None of the exceptions allowed by SB nine apply within the city boundaries. All SB nine units will be required to have one enclosed parking space.
It's hardly, it seems hard to imagine a lot that would be big enough to split in a typical residential area and put two units on and then have two enclosed parking places with each unit. I mean, that strains the imagination to see how you could get all that on. And if you arrange them sort of piggyback, the one in the back would have to have a driveway to get past the one in the front, right? I mean, this is such a hodgepodge, this SB nine. I was trying to get petition signatures in the spring to modify it, and then the state drive that I was part of gave up on trying to get the matter on the ballot this November. And so I have all these petitions. They won't let me use them anymore because the petitions will have to be renewed to apply to the future. But it just seems to me on the face of it that it would be so hard to implement on a typical residential lot in Thousand Oaks. In essence, Justine, what are the major factors or the major parts of the changes that we're contemplating here tonight? In essence, what changes? In essence, what changes are we in fact contemplating if we pass this?
Are you asking how our ordinance is deviating or taking advantage?
Wasn't it our goal to make it, and I think we are making it more stringent, aren't we, to utilize SB 9? And what would be the key fact or factors in that regard?
Yes, so the ordinance does take advantage of the flexibility allowed by state law in a couple of key ways. One is by adding or extending that occupancy requirement for the, to stay on the lot for three years.
Yeah, I would go along with what Ms. Bill de la Peña said. It seems to me that would be hard to enforce. I mean, you'd have to have somebody nosing around to see who's living there quite often. I, you know, I mean, I understand what you're saying. We're making it more difficult, but I do think there would be a little problem with enforcement of that.
Well, if I might, on that, Councilmember Jones, the enforcement side really is similar to most of our code enforcement actions. So in most cases, those actions would usually derive from complaints by neighbors. Neighbors, in particular, ones that are not happy, often keep a close, watchful eye on those things. And so it's really no different than any of other code violations. We would respond accordingly and prosecute accordingly.
Yeah. Okay, Justine, was there anything else other than the three-year requirement?
Yes, so we've also included several objective standards as part of the ordinance, which are different from state law. So some of the architectural design standards, notably to have the garage, or sorry, the parking be enclosed. The state law does not require the enclosure of the parking. Prohibition on grading on steep slopes, prohibition on removing protected trees. Those are constraints that people could run into. In addition to other things like the front yard step back is specified by this ordinance. It's not specified by state law, things like that. No flag lots. You have to do the easement instead of having two curb cuts, requiring a 15% usable open space in addition to the storage. Those are all objective standards included in the ordinance, which are not mandated by state law.
Well, let me just say that I think that you've done a good job. And I think this is probably about as far as you can go in saying that we're still, you know, abiding by SB 9, but we're including standards to make these additions more palatable to the community and to the city. I don't like SB 9 at all, and whenever I get a chance, I'm going to try to either severely modify it through the initiative process or else do away with it through the referendum process. But I would like to compliment you on what you've done because I do think that these are logical measures that you've put. And I do think that it will be more stringent, you know, more stringent requirements for anybody that wants to do this. It may dissuade them, that would be my hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. On this enforcement issue, I understand that it's calling for the owner to live there for three years, and that's all good. To me, the bigger issue, for me anyway, is that these things don't turn into STR, short-term rentals. You know, you got to be there at least 31 days. And I guess enforcement for that would also be basically neighbors complaining to us, correct? I mean, it's not something that we can go out and, you know, have a code enforcement officer out there, but...
That is correct. We do not do proactive enforcement. We are reactionary based on complaints.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that short-term rental business, I could see how that could tend to happen. And needless to say, STRs are a little controversial in not just our city, but in a lot of cities. Although, as you said, Justine, so far we've only had one application. And I think you mentioned to me earlier, the trend seems to be multi-generational families, meaning that, you know, mom and dad might want their mother-in-law with them or their kids. And that seems to be the trend of taking advantage of SB 9, isn't it, which you've seen so far?
Anecdotally, yes. That's, a lot of the inquiries we've been getting have been from families wanting to have space for their family members, brothers, sisters, mostly children, to be close to them and to take advantage of the assets that they have to spread the wealth around amongst their family, so to speak.
Yeah, I could see that. I mean, I do have my reservations about SB 9, but it is the law of the land. And tonight, we're here to make sure that the objective standards, make sure we get a good quality project. The one other thing, just so I'm clear about this, it's four units. After the lot split, it's four units, which could be any mix. Could be two detached, two ADUs. It could be one attached, three ADUs, but no matter what, it's just four units max.
You wouldn't be able to do three ADUs, but you could do, you do two primary units or non-ADU units, and then two ADU units, one of them could be a J-ADU. But at no point at any time would you have more than four units on the original property boundary.
Got it. Yeah, you're right. You probably wouldn't do three ADUs. That wouldn't make much sense. But yeah, I just want to be clear on that, number four. Thanks, that's a lot of information. Thanks for putting that together for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Ms. Kendall, just a real point of clarification for me on the occupancy, because we're talking about the three-year and all that. Is that three years from the date of application or the date of certification of occupancy? Or is it, in other words, is it from when I come to you and say, hey, I want to build one? Or is it when I say I have it built and now I'm going to live there?
So for the urban lot split, it's from the date of approval of the map. So we would not approve the map until there is a habitable dwelling unit on the property.
So basically from occupancy time?
Right, you have to be able to occupy for three years.
Very good, thank you. And then on the 25% slope question, because we do have quite a few homes in here that are affected by a 25% slope. Currently, you're not allowed to do any cuts into a slope of that size. If that precludes someone from doing a lot split, how does the mechanism work there? Can they still do the lot split? And is, I think you mentioned, an 800-square-foot house that needs to be put there? Can it be larger or is that the maximum?
The ordinance is written to say that you could only disturb the slope up to, or any of the standards, up to allow the absolute minimum level of development that we have to allow. So you would only be able to do whatever the minimum amount of disturbance is to get to those two units of 800 square feet each, if you say on the vacant parcel.
So they don't have to be matching units? In other words, if I have the existing pad that is big enough for a 3,000-square-foot house with a slope, then it would only be 800 square foot for the second part?
Right.
Thank you. And we went through the exercise, I believe it was in March, if I remember right, about doing our objective standards citywide. Are those going to be effective for this application? Or is it, there's some exceptions that are going to have to go into place? Can you go a little bit into those?
Yes, so the ordinance does say that the objective standards, Article 22, which were recently adopted, don't apply to these SB 9 projects. They really were not written with this type of development in mind. But they have been incorporated into this ordinance as appropriate for this type of infill, small-scale development.
There's other cities who have attempted to do workarounds of SB 9. One that pops into my mind, a city declared itself mountain lion habitat. And other ones have tried to designate half their city as a historic district. Those resulted in lawsuits, did they? And what was the result of the litigation on those?
Yeah, I'm not sure that they resulted in litigation in every case, but there was pushback from HCD and the community. And ultimately, with regard to the mountain lion habitat, they actually backpedaled on that and got rid of that provision.
Are there any other cities who are taking an unusual look at the, of the Senate Bill 9 and having success with that? Or is there any other things that we could put on the table that we haven't been able to?
Well, it's still pretty relatively early. SB 9 does allow you to place objective standards so long as they don't preclude two units of up to 800 square feet. So certainly, different cities are coming up with different objective standards that make sense for their communities. And so this ordinance, we think that we've come up with the objective standards that make sense for this community.
Okay, yeah, I don't want any of our comments up here to give anyone the impression that we're, we don't want housing. I think we all recognize that housing is an important aspect. Perhaps this is a pretty heavy hand that's being asked of this. But this law is already in place, is that correct?
Yeah, so SB 9 is in place and is applicable to the city. This ordinance is really just to incorporate the provisions of SB 9 and implement those provisions and regulations that the city can implement under SB 9 to have an effective ordinance for the city.
And currently, we have one applicant who's in progress. I imagine that the state regulations would apply to this one applicant, and then future ones would be subject to this new proposal?
Correct. The application that's in right now is only subject to the state law as it is written. If this ordinance is adopted and upon the effective date, any application submitted after that effective date would have to follow the regulations in the ordinance.
Thank you. Another question from Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Yes, the tree replacement is now one-to-one with this SB 9? Instead of, it supersedes our own ordinance, which is normally three-to-one?
The ordinance that we have in place now only requires a one-to-one replacement if they're, if you're talking about a residential property with a house on it already, which seemed most similar to the types of projects we would be seeing.
So the three-to-one is then for a commercial or what is?
Commercial or vacant properties.
And multi-use, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, another question.
Yeah, since this can be done ministerially, I wish we could figure out some way of notifying the council. Would it be onerous on your part to have to, or be requested to bring, say, once a month, some information to the council?
So councilmember...
As to whether or not we're having applications that are nearing the stage of ministerial approval?
So Councilmember Jones, we produce a monthly development activity report. You probably see in the council mail. This will be a subset of that.
So this would be included in that report, then?
That is correct.
Okay, but if you, if they fulfill all these requirements, the council would have nothing we could do anyway, is that right? You just approve it and...
And the development activity report includes a number of items that are in the same, in that same ballpark, right? Things that are within council's policy that don't come through planning commissioner or city council. So that report will have a subset category relating to SB 9.
So we would be notified how often then of any activity relative to this that had been given a ministerial approval?
Yeah, we produce that document for you in your council mail on a monthly basis.
On a monthly, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from colleagues? We do have a couple of public speakers that we'd like to get to. So let me open it up to our public speakers. Currently, we have two people waiting for a comment. One of them is Gina Cool, who is online. So she's on the Zoom. Ms. Cool, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Gina Cool. I live in Thousand Oaks, California, 91362. I don't know if I'm supposed to be telling you the zip code. And I'm just calling to express my, I really don't want this state-run lot splitting to happen. I guess it's supposed to be four ways. I mean, what's to prevent somebody like Blackrock to come in and take a couple houses each neighborhood and split it up into like eight new families? And then they do it to the next neighborhood and then the next neighborhood? And all of a sudden, this place, the whole face of Thousand Oaks is changed? So I'm, I just don't want this to go through. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have John Duncan. I believe John may be in-house here. John?
Are you guys kidding me? Okay, I just wanted to get your attention. I love you all. I pray for you all, staff, everybody. You guys, you don't have an easy job, and I totally understand it. But this SB 9 is the kind of stuff you see as it's being dictated from Sacramento and beyond that. This is the kind of stuff you see in communist countries. They shouldn't dictate to us what we do with our lovely Canelo Valley, right? I mean, does anybody disagree with that? Anyone? That's good. I know this is a tough situation because we've got a lot of people up there, you know, that I guess we could follow the money. And I'm not accusing anybody here of that, but if we were to follow the money and see what's really driving this, I think we would find some interesting things besides just trying to increase numbers of units for families and stuff like that. But what about the people who live here, who moved here, with the understanding that we had a, you know, we had a general plan and we had a certain density that, you know, they bought and invested to live here with their families, and now that's being taken from them? That's a form of theft. It's a form of theft of value of their own home because property values will not increase like they would if we weren't increasing the density and the traffic and the population and everything. So I'm wondering, you know, I wish Jackie Irwin was still here because I wanted to ask her, you know, where is she in all this? I was hoping that she would protect us as an assembly member, you know, her people. She's supposed to protect her people. And I know she's not part of this group, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. But where is the TO council on this? Again, I love you guys, and I pray for you guys to make the right moral and ethical decisions and all that. But I'm hoping that you guys will protect us. And I know that they made this law, and that's hard to fight and push back on. And, you know, some of us will say, oh, our hands are tied, there's nothing we can do, it's the law. But I don't believe that's actually true. I've been told a lot of times in my life that, oh, you can't do that, or you won't be able to make that happen. And that wasn't true. I was able to make things happen. And I think you guys are smart enough to make something happen where we could, maybe Tracy Noonan could head up a team to sue the state and say, hey, we're not going to follow this law. And we could join up with other cities and other counties to do the same thing. There are other counties and cities doing this. Seamy Valley is doing something right now with this. I think all five council members are pushing back on it. So if you guys can't do that and serve your people to protect our lovely Canelo Valley, I think what's going to happen is maybe the people will get together and do a lawsuit against Sacramento. Because it's going to harm us. It's going to harm us, you know, and our, just the density alone. I mean, I've got a neighbor, and they rent their house out. got a neighbor and they rent their house out and they have about eight people living there. And it's, it's just a, you know, they've got a dwelling in the back and they rent out to about eight people, but they usually have about 10 or 12 there. And there's always about 10 cars out there. And they're great guys. I love them. They're fun and everything. But if all the other houses start doing that, it's going to get crowded and it will end up like San Fernando. And I don't know if y'all have been out there lately, but man, it's not, not good. But anyway, I'm going to continue to pray for y'all for doing good ethical, moral things. And I hope it helps. But I think we all need to be strong and push back against this kind of tyranny. Even if we want to do it our own way, maybe we don't like the way that Sacramento's pushing certain things on it, we can tell them, hey, keep your ideas there and we'll do things our way. And I think we could be successful with it. So anyway, God bless you all. Again, I love you all. So don't think I'm a little pissed. But I think we can actually do something good out of all this. So do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right.
We have some comments from staff on?
And I may, if it's okay with staff, I just want to make a couple of comments off the top here. And thank you, sir, for coming down and speaking and speaking with passion. We share that. We were one of the lead cities fighting against this. We're on record with multiple letters and requests and lobbying efforts and others, as are so many other cities in doing that. But we were there from day one and really pressing that forward. There's not many cities that have really come to this place and done this level of research on this. The whole reason we're doing this here tonight is, we know it's the state law today. We know there are some legal challenges out there and there'll be more to come. And we want to make sure that there's enough protections in place here. That we've only gotten one application to go through so far that's moving forward through here. And that one is an interesting one in that it just involves the split of an exact home. So it's not a building of a new structure. It's a different kind of structure arrangement. But in this case, what the council is considering tonight, what staff have brought forward, are some additional restrictions that are going to make a difficult process even more challenging. One of the things that I said this last fall when we talked about SB 9 moving forward is, not that Thousand Oaks is inoculated from it because we're not, but our land valuation here alone creates an environment in which it is going to be extremely challenging for folks to bring a project forward. Because in many cases, the lots are going to require either demolition of existing structures. And so the financial means and the ability to live in those means is going to be required. And so I appreciate our team coming forward and doing this. We're going to stay absolutely on the forefront, continuing to look for potential legislative remedies around this. Often what happens is new legislation comes out and then there's varying follow trail bills that will provide some additional restrictions. And we're certainly going to be advocating hard for that. This council's done a lot of hard work on our general plan effort to center growth where it needs to be along the 101 corridor and areas that are outside of residential neighborhoods. And we've remained very consistent on that. And that's where we think that should occur. I know, Justine, you probably have a couple other follow-on.
Just before we go, Justine, I just had a couple of comments as well. And that is that, you know, Drew is right. The city was on record as opposing this legislation and not because the city opposes housing, but because the city always tries to enforce local control. We do not believe that one size fits all with every city in the state of California. So anytime there is legislation that's pending where it usurps local control, the city is always on record as opposing. And the city, you know, vehemently opposed this legislation for that reason. There are two pending lawsuits right now. They are new lawsuits. There's been no case decisions on it. There's been no decisions on those cases. But it's important to know that all of those cities that are involved in that legislation did exactly what you are being asked to do tonight. Staff, they filed lawsuits, but they also drafted legislation in order to comply with SB 9 and in order to maintain as much local control as possible. So they did exactly what you are being asked to do tonight. As for Simi, Simi did the same exact thing that is before you tonight. They adopted an ordinance with respect to SB 9 to implement SB 9 and to maintain as much local control as possible. Now I'll turn it over to Justine.
I just have one brief follow-up addressing the concern about investment developers or somebody coming in, buying swaths of property. And there's two things, standards which would specifically address that. One is the owner occupancy. And so having to own the property in order to be the applicant and then having to live on that property means that you can't buy multiple properties and live on all of them at the same time. And the other one is that an urban lot split can only occur or cannot occur if the property next door has been split by a party, either the same party or somebody acting in concert with that party. So I could not buy a property and then my brother and split it, and then my brother split the property next door. That would be prohibited. Similarly, a company couldn't buy multiple properties in a row and split them all. They would only be able to do, you know, every other one. But again, they'd have to own the property and live there.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Very good. I think we don't have any other public speakers on this topic, so let's close the public hearing right now and open it up to our council comments and other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, well, I think it's inevitable that we have to approve this tonight. I watched the planning commission. They had some very in-depth discussion of it. And, you know, sometimes you wonder then why, you know, what are we still doing here if we can't really approve anything and if things are being approved administratively or mysterially, ministerially? And it is, I'm glad that Mr. Powers mentioned, the city of Thousand Oaks vehemently opposed SB 9, not because we oppose housing, as Ms. Noonan said, but because it's about local control. And we lost that fight. We sent letter after letter. We lobbied. We sent a veto request to the governor. All of that happened last year. I remember that because my signature was on those letters. And it's, we lost. And the majority of cities were really not happy with this. But here we are. It is state law. And we are trying to retain whatever little control that we have. And so I am ready to move that we approve this because I think staff has thoroughly researched this and made it and gave us and given us the best available options. Really. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? Mr. Adam?
Yeah, not only did we oppose SB 9, but so did hundreds of other cities in the state of California. We're just one of many. But as Tracy mentioned, if those lawsuits succeed, you know, we'll, we can easily rescind SB 9 based on the outcome of those lawsuits, which remains to be seen. But in the meantime, we need to protect ourselves and protect the city. And I think staff's done a good job of augmenting the objective standards that were given to us by the state. We were able to insert some of our standards as well and exercise as little local control as we can to make sure that if these projects come forward, we get the best possible projects. So I will support the motion.
I'd just like to say briefly that cities are created by the state and the state has authority to pass laws that apply to the city. I think the ones that passed this had never been in local government. I agree with the idea of increasing affordable housing, but this was a terrible way to try to do it. As I've said before, I wish that people in Sacramento had ever been in local government and they might have known not to do this. But I think the steps that have been recommended tonight are logical. I think they're within our ability to do. I think they would stand up if they were challenged. And I do think they protect us in many ways and make it less likely that someone would try to, you know, on a grand scale, subdivide a lot of lots. So I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I believe I too will support the motion. It does give us a modicum of some control that the state has brought to us. This law is already in place. And as Mr. Jones pointed out, the state does have the ability to make laws. And we have the responsibility to enact those laws at our level. That said, I think it's a law that wasn't well-formed when it was passed. This is a one-size-fits-all that doesn't seem to really fit our aesthetic here. So in terms of what we're trying to do tonight is massage this law to be more of a Thousand Oaks-friendly and aesthetic. So I think that's appropriate for us to do that. The, as my colleague said, I was part of that. I am one of the representatives to California League of Cities. 262 of the cities in California protested against this. This is something that we did not want to see happen because it takes away the customization of local codes that's so important to cities. The state, though, from their viewpoint, sees a critical need for housing. And they base their decision on this critical need of housing that they have assigned. So there's a difference of opinion on how this came about. There is lots of different things we could do. Mr. Jones was talking about a petition that was put out for possible, something to be voted upon by the initiative process. That is not happening this time. It may happen sometime in the future. There are other cities with lawsuits that are out there that we have not seen and been able to digest yet. But these are items that will, unfortunately, this Prop 9, I'm sorry, Senate Bill 9 will be a plane that we build while we're flying it. There's very little case law on such a sweeping change to land use in California. Just a couple of items I want to make sure that everybody knows. The city protested against this. It fell on ears that were more concerned with a perceived housing issue in the state. And the state lawmakers went a different direction. Our own representative here in Thousand Oaks, Jackie Irwin, voted against it. So she was representing our interest. But again, it's a democracy and the votes went the other direction than what we had intended. We all recognize that we need housing. There's a need for housing, but this is a one-size-fits-all club that is asking us to do it in a way that may isn't, maybe isn't the best for Thousand Oaks. With that said, though, I probably will support the motion tonight to give us at least that modicum of control. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember McNamee absent. And I do have an ordinance title to read into the record. Ordinance amended the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by adding Article 37 to Title IX, Chapter IV, modifying Sections 9-4.202 and 9-4.2202 and adding Section 9-3.305 to Title IX, Chapter III, Article III, to update the city zoning regulations to implement 2021 Senate Bill Number 9, SB 9, including the addition of a ministerial process for the approval of urban lot splits and two-unit housing developments, MCA 2022-70465.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe we do have a second public hearing tonight, if you'd like to read us in.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B, Revised Water Conservation Ordinance and Contract Term Extension for Related Services. Speakers are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Two individuals have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have five minutes.
Thank you very much. This has to do with our water conservation ordinance. And we do have a presentation by our Sustainability Department, Ms. Helen Cox. And we have also available for questions, we have John Brooks, I believe. Is John here? I don't see John. But we also have Nader Hadari.
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here this evening to present a revised water conservation ordinance and amendment to the Water Patrol Services Agreement. Also with me this evening and available to answer your questions is Deputy Public Works Director Nader Hadari. The purpose of the ordinance revision before you is twofold. Firstly, to clean up and clarify the water restrictions at each water shortage level, including those required by Metropolitan Water District and the state, and organize them into one single document. The second purpose is to prepare us for a future outdoor watering ban should Metropolitan mandate that. Last November, the city's water conservation ordinance was updated to include a state-required water shortage contingency plan defining the measures to be taken at six different water shortage levels. Then on May 24th this year, council passed a resolution declaring a Level 4 water shortage with minor modifications to the ordinance that included specifying some exemptions to the one-day-a-week watering. That council item also included supplemental package with additional information on hand-watering and low-flow irrigation and allowed for a 60-day grace period for conversion of existing spray sprinklers to drip irrigation. Since that resolution was passed, the state has banned the irrigation of ornamental turf on commercial, industrial, and institutional properties. And Metropolitan has limited irrigation to 10 minutes per week, which conflicted with our ordinance. So council subsequently passed a resolution on August 30th to bring us into compliance. As a result of the evolution of these conditions, the current water conservation measures are no longer contained in any single document. A primary purpose of the ordinance before you tonight is to rectify that and also to incorporate the state's temporary ban on irrigation of ornamental turf on commercial properties into our permanent water conservation measures. On June 27th this year, the city signed an agreement with Cobalt Security Services Incorporated to conduct water patrols throughout the city agency's service area. This service has been a valuable enforcement mechanism for helping to gain compliance with our watering restrictions. The agreement expires at the end of December this year, and staff is requesting budget and expenditure to extend that agreement through June 2023 so that we can continue this service. Besides the contracted service, city staff are also conducting enforcement patrols. Additionally, the city is increasingly using water meter data to identify violators. Community-reported observations of violations are helping us to direct patrol services as necessary. This graphic shows where we stand today on recorded violations and citations. As you can see, we have issued over 1,500 warnings for first violations and 253 fines. We have an appeals process in place and have so far processed just two appeals. This table shows the monthly use target set by Keyagus and the most recent week's performance by all local agencies receiving water from Keyagus. All three agencies serving Thousand Oaks, and these are highlighted here, California Water Service, California American Water Company, and the city itself exceeded their 89 gallons per capita per day, or GPCD, October target. This is the toughest target that we've been subject to so far. In the summer, our target was 106, GPCD, but as we move into the cooler months, the new used target has been lowered. Usage has not yet trended down to match the target. And thus, in the first week of October, we were well in excess of our budget. Indeed, and to an even greater extent, were the other two agencies serving the city. This map shows the state water project-dependent areas served by Metropolitan Water District in dark orange. And these are the ones that are subject to the one-day watering week prohibition or restriction, sorry. Keyagus, which is on the top left of the map there in the northwest, which serves the city of Thousand Oaks and areas north and west of us. And Las Verginas, which serves the area immediately south and east of us, are the only two in this area that are not currently meeting the Metropolitan Water Use currently meeting the Metropolitan water use targets. Fortunately for us, the other Metropolitan agencies served by the state water project are meeting the current mandate. This graphic shows the performance of those six state water project-dependent Metropolitan districts. As you can see, our district, Callejas, is exceeding its target by 14% and Las Verginas by 45%. The other four districts have water use lower than their budgets, as shown by the negative values here. But since the region as a whole is on target, Metropolitan has not imposed a full outdoor watering ban. Should that change, the revised Level Five measures contained in the ordinance before you tonight, prepare us for this by mimicking the Metropolitan's zero-day watering mandate that includes some exceptions as allowed by Metropolitan. The city is thus positioned to enforce such restrictions within 30 days by council resolution, should the situation demand it. That ends my presentation. Thank you for your time and attention. We're available to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cox, for your presentation. We do have some questions from our council members. Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. So we, you're showing us that Metropolitan Water District as a whole is meeting their goals, but we're not. Are the other tax ratepayers then basically subsidizing, or making up, or saving for us?
Only in terms of water, not in terms of dollars. There's no monetary balance taking place here.
So they're saving so much water that we here actually...
Are benefiting from this.
Are benefiting from their water conservation. Thank you.
Ms. Adam?
So we're at Level Four now, and I'd hate to see us have to go to Level Five, which is no outdoor watering at all, correct?
There are some exceptions to, to that, and we've built those into this revised ordinance. So there would still be exceptions for watering turf in public recreation areas, as we have now, like playing fields, the park and rec areas, other recreation areas, so they would be exempted. There is also exemption for drip irrigation for up to 10 minutes, oh, sorry, more than 10 minutes, for one-day-a-week on drip irrigation, and for watering, hand-watering of trees.
Oh, is that right? So even in Level Five, you can still use drip?
Yes.
Oh.
From what, Metropolitan hasn't actually issued what the, the regulations would be, but they do say that the current exemptions for drip irrigation would continue.
Hmm, okay. Well, I wish we could offer better solutions, but Thousand Oaks, for decades now, has been 100% dependent on imported water. We're working some other solutions to come forward, but they're a little further down the road. So in the meantime, the only choice we have is conservation. And it's imperative that we keep that up because the, you know, the next level is worse than this one. So if you haven't converted to drip, please consider doing so. That definitely helps, and just try to stay at it as best we can.
Very good. One more question down there from Ms. Bill De La Peña.
In follow-up to my comments, I just wanted to say that the other two private purveyors in the city of Thousand Oaks have not done enough to enforce conservation at all. And so they're only now starting with a water patrol. And I think that is why we are seeing the, our poor progress in, in savings. I hope that with the new water patrol coming on for California American and California Water Company, then we will see more savings. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. You always do a great job. Quick question on, there were some fines that were possible coming down the line. Where are we on that? Has there been any action from Callejas or from Metropolitan to enforce any fines on the purveyors of the water? In other words, the city or some of the other companies?
So Metropolitan has not yet decided on whether they're going to implement volumetric standards throughout for everybody. If they, if they do that, the earliest would be the beginning of December, and at that point, they could decide that there would be a penalty of $2,000 per acre foot imposed on any agency which exceeded its target. So we're not there yet, but that is definitely a possibility for the future.
And remind me that $2,000 a square, cub, an acre foot is roughly double in fine, or actually, double and a half, more or less, of fine on top of the cost?
So I think our cost currently is around $1,500 per acre foot, so it's, it would be more than double what we currently pay for water.
Interesting. But they, they haven't come to us with, with the volumetric measures yet? And if, if, if they do come to us, what is, what is our reaction to it? How are we going to absorb that?
Let me cover that one. Good evening, council members. Obviously, that's a concerning matter. We're in the process of doing a rate study to, with a financial consultant to help us plan for what that would be and what the options we may have at that time to, in order to help us absorb those costs.
Would you be bringing that to us if and when Metropolitan declares Level Five?
Yes, given the significance of it, yes, we would.
Thank you. We do have, any other questions from my colleagues? We do have a couple of public speakers, and so we will open that to public speaking. We have in-house, I believe both, John Duncan and Jeff Schwartz are up next.
Hello again. Okay. Thank you. I got five minutes. This is great. I don't need that much time, I don't think. But have you guys heard, I know you can't answer the question, but maybe you can. I don't know, maybe somebody will feel bold. But have you heard about them, the state of California dumping water out of the reservoirs over the last year at times to help protect the Delta smelt fish and the steelhead trout? Anybody nod their head if you want? Yeah, see? Okay, cool. I think we should have a fish fry, and we could feed all the children. And, and then we should hold that water and use it in places where we need it. What do you think? Dr. Cox? Okay, and I can't answer the question. Anyway, I'll just...
Please, just a reminder, direct your questions to us.
Okay, okay. Sorry. She just, she's really smart. Anyway, the, actually, the main reason I wanted to talk was the way we're imposing, or the way we're doing the, the patrol. So we're taking money from the taxpayers to get a patrol to go around and find them, and it just seems kind of weird. It's kind of reminds me of Nazi Germany. And I, I think that, yes, conserving water is a good idea, you know, but the, the whole patrol thing just kind of feels weird, and I just wanted to share that. So I don't know if it's a good idea. I think maybe there's a, I, I would think that people would be more careful on their own, I think, as opposed to having a patrol go around like that. Something to consider. Might want to think about it, and, and it is a lot of money, you know? I know that the water's very expensive now, too, but, and I also wanted to mention, I believe there's about 10 different bonds that were approved in California over about the last 10 or 15 years for water infrastructure projects that have not been implemented. So maybe we need to kind of follow up on those things and maybe do a little bit of research on that, see if maybe we can make some of those things happen. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. So thanks again for all you do, but I wish you would have voted no on SB Nine. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we do have Mr. Jeff Schwartz.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks. We've had a perpetual water crisis for generations, not only in California, but also elsewhere in the country. The cause of these water shortages has been centralized government control and political allocation of water. There's virtually no free market in water right here in California, and that's why we have shortages. The best solution for water shortages is to allow free markets in water to exist, in addition to guaranteeing a basic supply of water to the poor. This innovative solution has already been tried elsewhere with resounding success. Free markets in water can completely solve our problems. Our city council needs to educate the public as to the real cause of these shortages. We're seeing the emergence of a pattern from big government entities, such as the state government in Sacramento. These government entities are falsely blaming average citizens for being the cause of problems that the governments themselves are creating. The federal and state governments claim that their big government programs are the solution to the water shortages and not the cause. Nothing could be further from the truth. The truth is that the water shortages in California and other parts of the nation are directly caused by misguided and counterproductive government programs. One major cause of our perpetual water crisis has been government, government giving away up to 80% of California's water to special interest groups at artificially low rates subsidized by the taxpayer. Why is the taxpayer being forced to subsidize water for special interest groups? When these special interests receive water at low subsidized rates, they have far less incentive to conserve water than they otherwise should or would. Our city council needs to educate the public that the politicians and bureaucrats in Sacramento and Washington, D.C. are the cause of this crisis. We need council members who will push back against pressures to turn our government into a totalitarian state, like, for example, Communist USSR or East Germany, where in those countries, there were shortages of all sorts of necessities. And that's where government imposed restrictions, fines, rationing, and quotas on their citizens' use of resources. That's right out of the Communist playbook. America was the strongest nation in the world for two centuries because of our commitment to liberty and free markets. We must end the mindset that we need big government rules and enforcers to impose quotas and restrictions on the average citizen's use of resources. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I don't believe we have any other public speakers, so let's close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to responses from our staff and then questions.
So to the first speaker, we, we're actually mandated to have an enforcement plan, so that is part of the Metropolitan requirement to meet these restrictions. Also, we wish that it was true that people would voluntarily all comply with the regulations. Unfortunately, evidence proves that, that is not necessarily the case. We also do have many residents who look to us for enforcement because they are obeying the rules and they do not appreciate it when their neighbors do not obey the rules, so it works both ways. As far as the cost of that, we will be reimbursed. I believe at least half of the cost of the enforcement will be reimbursed to us by the Callejas Water District for those water patrols. It also helps us to avoid future penalties because we need to come into compliance, or the, the outcome could be even more costly to us. So even though we're outlaying money now to pay for those patrol services, it's potentially avoiding future penalties that could be much more burdensome. Some of the other comments, I'm going to let Mr. Hadari comment on our efforts as far as infrastructure. I just wanted to say one thing about the, we, we do hear comments about these Delta smelts and why we're protecting those fish, or whether state protects those fish. They're actually a really important linking species between the fish that, the marine species that feed on the vegetation, and then they actually are an important link in the food chain to the larger fish that feed on them. And the California fishery, fisheries depend very, very heavily on the survival of that species to keep our marine fisheries in, in business and to protect the larger food chain. So they are important for that reason. I'm turning it over to Mr. Hadari to comment on the infrastructure projects.
Yeah, thank you. As was mentioned, the current position we're in is we're 100% reliant on this, you know, state water project, imported water. But in, in light of the drought and the need to, you know, change that, that formula, we are actively pursuing several local opportunities to help ourselves become partially self-reliant on water resources, and we have several projects in, in the works on those, and we've, we've been briefing the council on those periodically and are continuing to push forward on those. Most recently, an MOU, the city council approved an MOU just a few months ago between the city, Las Verginas Municipal Water District, Callejas, Camrosa, and others, to help us work together with those agencies and utilize some of the local resources we have here to help improve our, our outlook on water resources locally.
Go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. And one of the, and Dr. Cox, I know, I assume you would agree with this, one of the reasons we have to enforce is because if our allotment continues to exceed what it's supposed to be, and we have to start paying this $2,500 per acre foot, that will be borne by all the taxpayers, not just the ones that have exceeded their, their allotment. So it's only, it's, that's inherently maybe not fair to the people that have tried hard to try to keep their water usage down. So it's, the enforcement can hopefully prevent that, and, and...
Right, yeah. If we, if we go to volumetric penalties, those penalties could be substantial, several hundred thousand a month potentially, which far outweighs the cost of the patrol services.
Yes, and they'll be passed along to, ultimately, to the consumer, correct? And the people that have tried hard will pay it regardless, so, so there's that. And, yeah, Nader, you had a, a good point. We are trying to become less dependent on imported water. We, you know, before Thousand Oaks was incorporated, there was no water here. There's, the only water was groundwater, and we had cattle grazing, and we had wells, and that's how we watered the cattle. And then people started moving here, and the only way we could, you know, support them was to import water from the state water project and Metropolitan Water District, and finally through Callejas. Well, we're revisiting those wells, and they're filled to the brim because we haven't tapped them for years because we're not grazing cattle anymore. And there's a well that we're looking at on Las Robles Golf Course that could potentially provide about 10% of our water usage. 10. How much is it, Nader?
Five to 10%.
Five? Hmm, I thought it was 10.
Potentially up two, but...
Okay, up to 10. Anyway...
A more conservative number might be five.
It's something that we're trying to do, and we're working as, in a regional approach with Las Verginas Municipal Water District to funnel that water through their treatment plan and back to us, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, so it's something, but, you know, we need rain ultimately, and hopefully, we'll get it this season. get it this season.
And just one follow-on point to that, and that, because that project itself illustrates the complexity of the situation. So, council might remember that we put a demonstration well, or a treatment facility out there because that water, while it's underground, it's extremely salty. And so, it has to be significantly treated. That treatment is very expensive, and so that's the crux of the arrangement we're working on with Los Verdes now. Rather than building our own treatment plant for a small subset, piping that water back in and buying it at a discount is likely an option. And when we talk about 5% to 10%, one of the important things to remember is that's groundwater. And so, the question about groundwater is always, how quickly does it recharge? If you pump it out of the ground, how quickly does it go back in? Without rain falling, that number is much less. And so, that's really the sort of crux of the challenge there.
Ms. Bill Delapena.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Quick question. Should penalties be imposed on the City of Thousand Oaks? Is it just the ratepayers then that have to carry the burden? It's not all the taxpayers in the City of Thousand Oaks, just the ratepayers that are within the city's water system, correct?
Yes, that is correct, and that would be the case for us, and that would also be the case for Cal AM and California Water Service. But as I mentioned, we're doing that financial study right now to outline the options that would exist to see how those penalties would be spread potentially. We would, ideally, we would try to hope to avoid imposing any additional costs on those that are conserving and are doing the right thing.
And one follow-on point to that, because I think I see where your line of questioning is going, what's important to look at, you have three purveyors in town, and the city, while still struggling to meet the number, is doing much better than those two private purveyors. So, in one of the purveyors, it was 200% over. So, we have a scenario that could take shape in which you have some real rate inequity between the three providers, the two private providers and the municipal provider because of the lack of conservation. And so, it's just, I say that now to stress it because that could become a reality, and that's certainly something we talk about a lot internally and are concerned about.
Thank you for pointing that out exactly. That was, I was wondering about that, and that is why I need to stress again to our audience members tonight, and Dr. Cox mentioned it, not having water patrol really hasn't helped the private companies here, California Water Company and California American Company. They have not had a patrol for all these months, and they're egregiously above what the goal should be. And that is why they have hired a water patrol company now, because that's the only way to enforce, because people on their own are not going to do it. So, they gave ratepayers a chance, the ratepayers didn't heed the advice or the recommendations, and so, this is not Nazi Germany, Communist China, USSR. This is just really needing to ensure that we do have enough water for everyone in Southern California.
Hey, quick question, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
On this topic, so are you saying then that if we do have to pay these penalties, that the penalties would be spread disproportionately among the three purveyors, and the purveyor that was over the most allotment could pay more than the other two? Or would they just be level across the board? Or we don't know yet?
Well, the penalty, the value appears to be, has been contemplated at $2,000 per acre foot. That may change, but that only applies to that water you're using, whichever purveyor's using above their target threshold. So, it wouldn't apply to the entire amount that the purveyor's using. But since the other agencies are well higher than the core Central Thousand Oaks Water District, their penalties would be much, much greater, significantly higher. That would be the concern.
I see. So, the purveyor that has the highest overage, for lack of a better word, would pay the most penalty?
Correct. And that may lead to some rate disparity as...
Okay. And then, of course, as I said earlier, that's going to penalize the people that cooperated, for lack of a better word.
Well, it depends how the rate ultimately, that penalty is spread. Those two other water purveyors are private agencies, so they may have different rules that apply to them in terms of rate and PUC. But as for the city, we're trying to evaluate that right now and come up with the most fair strategy, should that day come, and we're hoping it doesn't come, but should that day come, what our options are.
That's the key. We're hoping it doesn't come to that, absolutely. So that's why we need to conserve. Thanks, Nader.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, well, you know, you're right. We were on wells a long time, and we didn't join, we formed a District Six, and in 1966 we joined Callejas, and that opened the door to have development here. There are some wells, I know in Newbury Park, that Cal AM used to use and blend with water. I don't know if they've given any thought to that, or if they still own them, that they've been, and I know one is on William Street, and there are, I think, at least three that I know of in the, well, they're in the Casa Cano area. Currently, we have three parks that use reclaimed water, because I guess they're in the gravity area of Los Verdes, and that's Two and North Ranch, the Playfield, and the Neighborhood Park, as well as Triumpho Park. It seems to me the best thing we could do would be to try to use the effluent from the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. I know it would be expensive. The reason we can use Los Verdes is because I believe it's gravity feed. This would all have to be pumped up, but if we did that, that could all be used for agriculture. That could be used to water all the lawns and the plants and so forth, and save the more desirable potable water. I mean, I guess that's potable, but I don't think people would be interested in drinking it at just a tertiary treatment. You might have to treat it more than that. I'm not an expert on that, so I don't know. But it seems to me that that would be better than a D-SAL plant, because you'd really have to pump it uphill. And to me, that would be very expensive to try to do that in Ventura County, but it may come to that with cities that are near the ocean. But I believe it should be all hands on deck here. You know, I think Bob knows, and I know because we've been in the precincts, there are certain people that I, I'm not a policeman, I'm not going to turn anybody in, but I can tell you, there are people that are evidently watering their lawns because they look just as fine as they once did. So, I guess that could be done perhaps more diligently than it's being done. But I think we're, we all should be in this together, and we all should do whatever we can do to conserve as far as possible. I mean, my wife is in charge of the water police in our house, and she's very diligent about obeying the rules, so she's maybe more dependable than I would be. But if everybody would knuckle down and do their part, I mean, we can't predict the weather, obviously, but it certainly would be nice if we'd get a good heavy rainy, it's coming rainy season. But in the meantime, I would agree that we should access the wells, as Councilman Adams said, and do a little blending of that with the Callejas water. The reason people had water softeners the first two years I was here, because of the odor that the well water gave off. And so, I think we wouldn't want to use it unless we blended it if we're going to use well water more extensively, you know, in the future. But as I say, I think this should be a joint effort. We ought to be imaginative, everybody pull together, and see if we can get people voluntarily to, you know, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I think my only comment would be that, as we were approached months ago about this when we first presented this, I believe in March or April of this year that we were informed of the dire water situation as reported to us by Metropolitan. I think all options should be on the table, and I agree with Mr. Jones, and I agree with the other council members who are looking at more long-term solutions. The Clean Water Project that is being done over at Los Verdes is using a reverse osmosis system that is exactly the same as what we commonly refer to as D-SAL, because it turns water that is tertiary treatment to drinkable water. In other words, our Hill Canyon would have to have some sort of reverse osmosis to become potable water. Very expensive, not only for that, very energy intensive, plus then we'd have to pump it back up to 400, 500 feet up the hill to our Bard Lake supply. So, it's on the table, but just, I want everyone to recognize that the San Diego plant, I think it's San Diego, San Clemente, has a D-SAL plant. That particular plant produces water, which is great. It's at twice the cost of our water that comes from State Water Project. That probably is one of the reasons we haven't looked at other options, but I think now that our options are getting to the point of we don't have water, then the cost is something that we're willing to accept. With that said, I think I would honor a motion if we have one.
I'll move to approve staff recommendation. Item 8B.
Very good. We do have a motion. Any comments on the motion? I just have the one comment that here again, we're looking at to do something. We need to do something to make sure that we are compliant with Metropolitan. But I just wanted to ask a quick question because we've been very negative tonight and how this is affecting the city and everything. How have we done, we are, I mean, you had the slide, but we made substantial savings in our water, didn't we?
Correct. We're about 30% below usage from last summer, so we have saved a considerable amount.
That's a great chunk, and I think we should applaud our residents for taking that on and being part of the solution on this. And I want to award our residents with an applause that they have taken this seriously and are doing it. So, I know we have a little bit further to go, but let's not ignore the fact that our citizens really have stepped up. And like Mr. Jones says, I have been walking the neighborhoods because it happens to be a certain season when we elected, reach out to everybody. Most of the folks have embraced this. There are some, as Mr. Jones pointed out, who haven't gotten, excuse me, haven't gotten a memo yet, but for the most part, people are complying, and I want to applaud our citizens for that effort.
Mr. Mayor.
If you're ready for a motion, I'll move the recommended action.
Yeah, we have a motion.
There is a motion on the floor, Mr. Jones, thank you.
Oh, pardon me, I didn't hear it.
And as maker of the motion, I just wanted to say that the city's, the City of Thousand Oaks' 16,000-plus ratepayers are the ones that are really doing well. And it's the ones that are with the private companies where residents or ratepayers are not doing as well. But overall, for the City of Thousand Oaks, they really have done well, and that would be my final comment to the motion.
Adam Clark.
Councilmember Bill Delapena.
Yes.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Right.
Mayor Engler.
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember McNamie absent, and I do have an ordinance titled to read into the record. An ordinance repealing in its entirety Chapter 2, Article 11 of Title 10, and adding Chapter 2, Article 11 of Title 10, adopting regulations for water conservation.
Thank you. We do have a couple other items here. I'll turn it over to our city manager Powers for some comments.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Our next meeting, regularly scheduled, will be two weeks from tonight on the 25th of October. Currently have a couple of items that are moving through the process. Update to our building code that we do have a couple of years, so that will be a municipal code amendment for our building code. We also have the follow-up on the self-storage moratorium and revised municipal code amendment that went to planning commission last night. And again, that is the meeting of the 25th, two weeks from tonight, and ironically, because I think it happened one other time that we were talking about the drought, we do have some rain that somebody texted me was moving through town right now, so maybe we need to keep talking about it and the rain will keep coming.
Well, just not end the debate if it's raining, if we're causing it, I mean...
I think we're wasting time. We need to run outside with a bucket. I would like to take just a minute, we have our, we do have some sad news report. One of our long-term employees, Catherine Louise Hazelton, passed away, and I want to adjourn tonight's meeting in her honor. She passed away on Sunday, September 18th. She was a member of the city's family, working family, for 31 years. She worked full-time from 1973 to 2004. Catherine was born down in Long Beach. Her family moved to Santa Paula and Ventura where she attended high school and started college. Catherine was employed by the City of Thousand Oaks as a customer service clerk and won recognition as a reliable, dedicated worker that managed many high-profile projects over the years she served. Throughout her career in both the finance and city manager's office, Catherine was promoted to senior account clerk, administrative secretary, office manager, management assistant, and assistant analyst. On her retirement in 2004, her coworkers adopted a beautiful oak tree in Catherine's name through the city's Adopted Oak Program, which she had helped to establish. Catherine completed her bachelor's degree in business administration at Cal Lutheran in 1988, and was the middle of, was the middle CLU graduate in her family between her two daughters. Catherine was an avid gardener, loved painting, sewing, ceramics, and crafts. Catherine delighted in making costumes for Halloween and hosted countless events for school and youth groups. She enjoyed volunteering at reading programs and children's events at the Thousand Oaks Library. Catherine is survived by her two daughters, Ellen and Cheryl, and four grandchildren. All who are fortunate to share her good company will always remember her professionalism and fun-loving nature. She will deeply be missed by her family, her many friends, and by her city coworkers.
What was her position with the city?
She was in both the finance and city clerk's office as analyst. So with that, I'll adjourn in her memory. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for coming.